Good evening, everyone. Thank you for sticking around for the second special council meeting for April 27, 2017. Mary Jo, would you please call and roll?
Mary Bill Beer.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Bart Palitski.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Tony DeMarco.
Here.
Debbie Tomusco.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have some minutes for approval this evening, and they are the minutes for the meeting of March 27, 2017. Could I have a motion for approval, please?
Motion approved.
Second.
To approve: Mary Bill Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Palitski.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Abstained because I was absent.
All right, on this evening's agenda, we have several items, so bear with me as I read them into the record. The first is to request to accept a donation for smoke and carbon monoxide detectors from Walmart to the fire department. Next is a request for authorization to continue with the salt consortium. And then next is a bid approval for the Roadown Road Improvement Project. Under old business this evening, up for third reading adoption are the following: Resolution 2017-6, a resolution in support of the City of Brooklyn Plan Unit Development (PUD) district overlay measure issue three on the May 2, 2017 ballot; Ordinance 2017-29, amending Rule 14 of the Rules of Council Order of Business codified pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Brooklyn; Ordinance 2017-30, authorizing a contract modification change order 7 and 8 with Eclipse Company LLC for the Teedham Road Project PID 95548 in the amount of $32,147.08; Ordinance 2017-32, amending Section 2 of Ordinance 2006-53 entitled establishing a city ICE time and admission rate for persons using city ICE for figure skating purposes only; Ordinance 2017-33, amending Section 1 of Ordinance 2006-19 entitled providing for fees for a summer figure skating program at the recreation center; Ordinance 2017-35, expressing the consent of the City of Brooklyn pursuant to Section 4933.16 of the Ohio Revised Code for Cleveland Public Power to construct distribution facilities within the City of Brooklyn and granting a non-exclusive franchise to Cleveland Public Power provide electricity services to customers in Brooklyn provided the requirements of all applicable code and any related agreements are met. On secondary this evening are the following: Ordinance 2017-36, authorizing the purchase of a Toolcat 5600 G Series Bobcat from Bobcat Company for $52,866.92 through government contract; Ordinance 2017-38, authorizing the sale of certain city-owned vehicles for the Greater Cleveland Auto Auction, public auctioneers and gov deals for the purpose of disposing of city vehicles and equipment at public sale; Ordinance 2017-40, amending certain sections of Ordinance 2004-45 establishing fees for the admission and use of facilities at the City of Brooklyn multi-purpose indoor recreation center; Ordinance 2017-41, amending Section 1B of Ordinance 2011-15 establishing Parma Heights Community Partner rates at the John M. Cohen Recreation Center and Auditorium. Under new business this evening, we have four items: Ordinance 2017-42, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Davy Resource Group to provide services to the City of Brooklyn; Ordinance 2017-43, authorizing and approving the purchase and installation of security cameras and auxiliary equipment for use at the Brooklyn Community Senior Center through state contract; Ordinance 2017-44, amending Section 1345.01 permit fees of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Brooklyn; and lastly is Ordinance 2017-45, amending Chapter 1361 occupancy permits of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Brooklyn. We will now proceed with our council meeting. At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say that pertains to the items on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer and as it pertains to an agenda item. There was one item that was passed along to me that was by a resident that was not able to attend the night that I was asked to read, so these are their words. I will read them as they are stated. This is from Vin Manfredi of 10232 Harmony Lane. "Just took a stroll last evening through Veterans Memorial Park with the misses on this fine spring evening. The parking lot was full, and there were a good number of people enjoying the warm weather there. We just kind of strolled up the hill from the parking lot while looking in on a Little League game on the upper field, making it past the left-field foul pole and descended the hill. I asked my wife what that wonderful fragrance was, to be told it was most likely honeysuckle. We made it down the hill, passing a pair of ladies walking up and listened to a country song in passing, being played on the radio by someone sitting on a wooden swing. I told my wife about when those gates were open, how vehicles used to race into it to make the water fly high. Too bad some of those '70s idiots didn't make it through and had to get pulled out. So the city gated it thereby, closing the entrance to cars permanently, and abandoned any future thinking about it. Shame, huh? She pointed out the ditch repair of the lower field, noting after my little story that the bridge is also bad and could probably easily be raised high enough to accommodate the water flow. And I noted that the lower field should be made into a parking lot so people could access the lower pavilions much more easily. We walked the trail back around the upper field, passing by a younger lady taking pictures, another lady just sitting and breathing fresh air while listening to her headphones, a group of about 10 kids of varying ages just hanging out while the daylight allows. We made up the slow incline and saw some younger families over there by the jungle gym. It was really nice. I made a point of heading over to the basketball courts to read that it's open from Memorial Day to Labor Day during the heat of the summer. Shame, huh? I mean, it looks really nice seeing their idol for nine months. I bet I could organize a pickup game or a couple of competitive games of force if it were open this week. It says you have to have a Brooklyn ID and can have one guest also. It opens from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and has nice plexiglass blackboards, and even has lighting for night games between May 31st and the first weekend of September. When I lived in North Royton, those hoop cords were not as nice. They were asphalt cords, and the rims were doubled so they could not be damaged as easily by hanging on them. We could turn on the lights and play till 11:00 p.m. on the weekends and even the weeknights if we were up to it. If there were people that wanted to use the park, well, they could at just about any time of year, any time of day, probably still can too. It does not say anything in the issue three ordinance that the park will be replaced or even expanded. It will make my wife and I very sad to lose the park. Sincerely, Vin Manfredi."
Mr. Van Kirk, I speak on issue eight. It's not about the agenda. It's school issue.
Unfortunately, we're not allowed to permit that according to the rules of council. Sorry, Mr. Bloom. We will now move on with reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We have just three this evening, and I will let Mrs. Palitski do both of hers, as for the Domestic Abuse Commission and also as the School Board Liaison.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I will be very brief. The Domestic Abuse Commission met on April 17, 2017, at 6:30 p.m. in the community room of the Brooklyn Fire Station. Since two members were ill at the March meeting, we decided just to update those members at that meeting. Kristin Dunleavy spoke in March, and she trains law enforcement throughout Cogga County. So we handed out the information she provided to those members, and we decided that we would meet again after the summer break and try to do more in the community, and that's the end of the domestic abuse report. Now for the school report. On March 22, Dr. Mark Gleikhoff spoke to the Ohio House of Representatives Finance Committee for Primary and Secondary Education. He requested fair funding for our school district. Brooklyn's budget has been negatively impacted by two factors: the phase out of tangible personal property tax reimbursement and the fact that we are a capped district because the state believes that we are an affluent community. The district's revenues have been capped, and non-public schools receive more than Brooklyn City schools. Brooklyn should be receiving $3.4 million but only received $1 million in 2016. It is not fair that non-public schools receive $1,200 per pupil and Brooklyn schools receive $600. Hopefully, this commission listened to Mr. Gleikhoff, and will do something about it. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Palitski. We will now move on with reports of council, and this evening we begin with Mrs. Bell Beer.
Thank you. I just basically have a couple things to say, two comments. One is on Resolution 2017-6. It's on third reading. Of course, it is the PUD. I've been going door-to-door and listening to people and asking their opinion about it. I have always maintained I'm not totally against it. I only wanted to extend it to November, when everyone knew all details, all facts, and everybody's answers, everybody's questions were answered. A couple weeks ago, I went to the PUD meeting at the senior center. There were many, many people there with all kinds of questions, questions about losing the park. People are afraid, and I can't blame them. You should see the fear in their faces. They are afraid. They don't know all the details, all the facts. My question is, many cities such as Independence, Hudson, they've taken a year, a year and a half to figure this out. They've had meetings. They've even invited residents to come in and help write it. Right? You know, to me, this is unbelievable, that we must know something that the other cities do not, that we could pass it so fast. I said, we must be geniuses here, that we know so much, that it doesn't take us this long to analyze it. It may be conceptually a good thing, but there is the potential of losing a park. There is a potential. And I hate to bring this up, but being married to a lawyer, and all the lawyer jokes I've heard in my entire life, some were funny, some were not, had to be defensive, but when I hear someone say, "Trust me, you know, trust city council, we may not all be up here when it comes time to vote for things." Well, in the past, they would say, "Trust me, I'm a lawyer." That was the biggest joke. So, I mean, I don't know how we can trust everybody up here without having all the facts and without not listening to all these people and taking everything into consideration. And in regard to other cities that have done this, that are successful, beautiful cities that have taken time and have all kinds of meetings where residents came in, and I really, really understood this, just to be able to pass this so fast. And I don't mean any disrespect to you, disrespect to you, Mr. Bloom. I understand where you're coming from. I only asked, why couldn't it have been on a November ballot when we could have discussed it a little bit longer? That is what I was asking for. The second issue I kind of have is 2017-29, Rules of Council. To me, I am a practicing Catholic. I love my Catholic faith. Prayer to me is lifting my mind and spirit to God. I cannot vote on something such as this without a meeting of my entire body up here, my constituents here, to see where everyone is coming from, how we want to approach this, what we want to do, what kind of organizational party. I cannot bring my God into this kind of arena, and I won't do it. That's just my opinion. Lastly, I just want to remind people when they're driving in the City of Brooklyn not to be on their cell phones, because that is against the law. So if you're driving around on your cell phones, beware. People take pictures, you know, this and that, so just be careful. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bell Beer.
May I have a recon?
Yes, Mr. Marco.
I think there's a little confusion in terms of the public session, in terms of what people could address council with, so there is a resident that would like to speak regarding the PUD, so I'd like to make a motion that we allow the resident to speak regarding that.
I'll second the motion.
To reopen the public session, Mary Bill Beer.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Bart Palitski.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Tony DeMarco.
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
So we will reopen the public session. At this time, if anyone in the audience has anything to say that pertains to the items on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less and as it pertains to agenda items.
I'm just going to repeat what I stated during the first meeting. I think it's important that it's on the record for other residents to view.
Mr. Huber, if you could, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Steven Urbic, 4402 South Amber Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Urbic.
So again, I'm just going to reread it. I think it's important it's on the record for other citizens to view. Well, what a first meeting. I mean, I'm digressing a little bit. The whole idea that was presented to us for the reason for this program was that we had to retain a large employer who's threatening to leave Brooklyn and holding us hostage if we didn't build them a brand-new Class A building in a park setting. So I spoke to interim council president, Mr. Van Kirk, at 2:30 p.m. yesterday and asked him a direct question, which was, "Have you ever met with the decision-makers of this company regarding staying in Brooklyn?" His answer, and I quote, "I have not spoken to any employer in Brooklyn." I then sent a request to the mayor and Mr. Udris yesterday, asking for the dates, times, names, and titles of the decision-makers that they have personally spoken to regarding the requirements to stay in Brooklyn. It's only been a day, so I haven't received a sponsor yet. I actually don't expect to get one. If the mayor or economic development officer, and it's a big "if," have not spoken with the actual people that make the decisions about staying in Brooklyn, then the entire premise for this PUD is a lie. So I asked Mayor Gallagher and Udris to provide all the documentation regarding the personal discussions with the leaders of this company prior to Tuesday's vote. Deeply disappointing that we did not have the actual feasibility study prior to the vote. That is crazy, that they're going to ask us to vote so blindly. Almost equally sad is that city leaders are asking our city employees to volunteer to go door-to-door on Saturday to campaign for the passage of this disastrous issue three as it's currently written. This is an old political trick. It's used by a lot of old-time hardliners, and kudos to the mayor for pulling that together. However, I spoke with the head of the Elections Commission this morning, Attorney Phil Richter, who stated, "Well, probably legal to use city employees to go door-to-door. It's borderline unethical and certainly not the right thing to do. I feel sorry for those workers, as it's no easy task. I know because my daughter and I alone have logged over a combined 27 miles in the last six days going door-to-door against this issue. I caution the city not to remove our literature while canvassing, and I have volunteers on different streets who will be watching with their camera phones for such illegal activity or remove our signs at polling locations on Tuesday. Again, we'll be watching. Remember, your best source of information is the actual ordinance itself. Go to the city webpage, read it. It's a tough read, but if you can plug through it, you can figure out what most of the stuff they're telling us is just fantasy." Specifically, page three at the bottom, where it states that "no less than 7.5% can be saved of the park." That means they can and will develop 92.5% of the existing park, and I think that was clearly shown during the earlier presentation today. We're going to sacrifice Brooklyn Memorial Park for a little square with four monuments on its corners. Other sections in the actual ordinance describe the size of the apartment buildings, but no limit on the number. It allows for big box stores up to 65,000 square feet that can be built in the park, with 75% of all parking in the developments to be outdoor surface areas or parking lots. We need to slow this freight train down by voting "no" on issue three on Tuesday, force our city leaders to rewrite this ordinance, and put in more protections for our fellow citizens. Force them to fully understand the ordinance, and especially the financing now, which is -- I mean, I'm degreed, but jeez. Force them to fully study the ordinance and make much-needed revisions that other suburbs have done for the residents. They ask us to hand them a blank check, literally ask us to hand them a blank check, and they ask us to trust them. I'm sorry, but what we saw today, there's just too many variables. We can't trust that. We need it in writing. We need it in the new ordinance. Remember, they rushed this to the ballot with only three weeks of study. Other suburbs take a year longer. We could do better. I mean, think about that, three weeks, from approval study to approval to put it on the ballot. Lastly, Mr. Van Kirk sent an email to council members offering his congratulations for adding this to the ballot and changing the face of Brooklyn. He hasn't changed it yet, Mr. Van Kirk. He forgot a little something called democracy and the will of the voters. Good luck, and vote "no" on issue three on Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Urbic.
Earl Blom, 4720 Forest Edge Drive. I guess you get to hear this twice, but I think it's important, from my perspective. I'm here to encourage the support of issue three, the Plan Unit Development Re-zoning Issue. Issue three for a Plan Unit Development Re-zoning Issue, or PUD, I believe is extremely important for our city. It is a zoning issue only. It allows the city to update our dated zoning code with flexibility for mixed uses. It allows for combined zoning and for developers to think out of the box instead of the traditional types of development in proposing new development for our city. It is a very restrictive process that allows the mayor and council, with massive input from the citizens of Brooklyn, to control and limit any proposed development within the PUD. Any development within the PUD requires city approval and city control of every step of the way. It is a zoning process that is attractive to today's developers that is not present in our zoning code now. It is a zoning code that attracts new types of development that will add to the tax base for both the city and the schools and generate new income. And I might add, I thought the presentation on the TIF was very informative on the previous meeting. It is a zoning code that will apply to the American greetings area. It is an opportunity to bring new life into our city and attract people to move here. It is a zoning type of code that many of our surrounding and competing communities have or are adding to their zoning codes, and we need to adopt the PUD to be competitive. Issue three, the Plan Unit Development Zoning, does not okay or guarantee, and I repeat, does not okay or guarantee the construction of the city center, which is only a potential idea now. The city center is a concept that is only in the talking stage and cannot go forward for further consideration without approval of the PUD. It is a future development idea that will have extensive vetting by both the administration and Brooklyn citizens before anything can be done. If down the road we build a city center, it would generate new revenue for our city and schools and add a central focus and vitality for our city. City center is a potential future idea, but it can only be considered with the passing of issue three, the Plan Unit Development. Developers would not talk to us about multi-use development without a Plan Unit Development zoning in Brooklyn. Issue three has the potential of having a very positive impact on our city and schools, and I encourage all to support issue three. Thank you.
Mr. Bloom.
Lori Kelly.
Oh, thank you.
So I'm not going to read my statement again, but I do have something to add to it. So I was pleased that when they were talking about the TIF, that he sort of explained one of my questions about the abatements and monies being earmarked for infrastructure repair. But he also went into the way that it works, and to me, and I maybe didn't understand, it seemed like it wasn't going to go back into the general fund for possibly 30 years. So you were doing those increments, and then at the end it went back to the general fund. So again, maybe I didn't understand, but that's a concern, not necessarily for me, but for my children or my children's children. Where will we be in 30 years? And that's a concern. The other thing was, I was very glad that Debbie brought up about density, because if we don't know the density, how are we going to do impact studies that are accurate or near, you know, give us a really good idea about what our roads are going to be like, what's our traffic going to be like? It impacts me where I live, and that's very concerning. So not knowing if we have four-story buildings or single-family housing or row housing, that's all very different. And while it was said, I think 105 housing units, let's say 3.5 people, two cars per unit, that's a lot. And it could be more if they have apartments that are four-story. So I think those are some very concerning things that people really need to think about. Again, I'm not opposed to it. I just want to see it done properly. And again, I prefer to have more time and be more informed to make a good decision when I vote on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you get everybody? Anybody else? To make sure.
Going, going.
Okay. No takers. All right, so we'll move on then. Get back to my place here. We'll continue on then with the reports of council, and our second report this evening is Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. I just want to bring up on the PUD on issue three, on the traffic end. I'm concerned about the traffic and where it's going to come in on the city, because right now, if we put the city center up, it's going to either come down Roadown to that pit off to Teedham and onto the highway, or come down Ridge Road around there. One way or the other, it's going to get through. I have been pushing with the mayor to get that 71 exit back on the agenda, and hopefully maybe the mayor can talk about it today, where we're at or how it's been talked about again. But the 71, where I'm talking past the Brookside Park down Ridge Road, where 71 comes on a ridge, if we can some way get those on-and-off ramps back into play, we could take the traffic and move it towards Cleveland, and they can, you know, either move to Medina or Cleveland, whichever way they're going, instead of back through our city. So that's major. That is very major, because the traffic in Brooklyn between Teedham and Ridge Road is terrible. It's terrible, especially in the rush hour. So I understand when it comes to traffic, and mayor, if you can touch where we're at in your report about that 71 exit, I'd appreciate it. There was a Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting that was held on Thursday, March 23rd, 6:00 p.m. The committee had unanimously motioned to recommend to council ordinance 2017-35, expressing the consent of the City of Brooklyn pursuant to Section 4933.16 of the Ohio Revised Code for Cleveland Public Power to construct distribution facilities within the City of Brooklyn and granting a non-exclusive franchise to Cleveland Public Power to provide electricity to service customers in Brooklyn, provided that the requirements of all applicable code and any related agreements are met. The benefits of the City of Brooklyn would include a rent payment of $18,000 a year for 20 years, as well as cheaper electricity for its own city-owned buildings. This would allow Brooklyn residents to choose between Cleveland Public Power or First Energy for electricity needs. This also opens the door with the idea and the possibility in the future of adding more panels powering our own city buildings. I strongly urge all city councils to support ordinance 2017-35. We're coming on the final stages for signup for the Youth Opportunity Employment Program. This program helps thousands of teenagers and young adults in Cogga County ages 14 to 24 to find summer jobs. To participate, you will need your birth certificate, photo ID, social security card. You may need to meet family income requirements. 14- and 15-year-olds will need work permits. Youth Opportunities will contact you if you have been selected to continue in the process and apply for a position. As a public official, I'm a strong supporter of the program, and I urge all teenagers and young adults 14 to 24 years of age to register. Registration will close on Monday, May 1st, at 5:00 p.m. To register, go to www.youthopportunities.org.
And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up is Mrs. Palitski.
Thank you, Mr. Van Kirk. I only have one little thing. On April 19th, 2017, our fire department once again proved how fortunate we are to live in a small town and not the big city. The fireman's quick response to the flooding at Sam's and Burger King may have saved lives or at least calmed the fears of many of the flood victims. My thanks to the chief and his staff. You are a credit to Brooklyn. I hope a solution can be found for this flooding problem so that it never happens again. My granddaughter texted me all the way from Columbus, since I live on Teedham, and said, "Are you underwater?" And I said, "No, I'm fine." But all over the state, people were aware of what happened, so I'm glad they responded like they did. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Palitski. Next up is Mr. DeMarco.
Just like to make some comments on the public meetings that have been had the last few weeks regarding the issue three and the PUD. I was very impressed with the level of questions that residents had regarding this issue. I mean, people really have done their homework. I've met some new residents that I've never met before, so I'm happy that people are engaged in what's happening with our city, and this issue is extremely important for the future of Brooklyn. I was disheartened by comments from the administration that, you know, if this doesn't pass, you know, services are going to be removed, and employees are threatened with job loss if this doesn't happen. this doesn't happen. And I said as at the last meeting, that's not the kind of leadership that Brooklyn should have and that the residents deserve. There are many ways to tackle the financial issues facing Brooklyn. Threatening residents with reductions in services or employees with their jobs is just, it's unfortunate, but I beg you, that's the reality of what's going on. So as I said at the last meeting, I'm not going to tell you how to vote. This is a very personal decision. It's a significant decision. Anytime you make, add an entire new chapter to the zoning code, it's a significant thing. So again, I just want to thank those residents that came to the public meetings, the administration for answering the questions that the residents had, and I guess we'll see what happens next Tuesday night. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Next up is Mr. Musco.
Yes, good evening. I just want to weigh in a little bit, since this is the last official council meeting before the vote on the planned unit development. Given that it's a zoning overlay, I supported putting it on the ballot, because I do think it gives the city flexibility for future growth and future opportunities. But then this thing has kind of taken on a life of its own with the city center project that's been in the planning stages and is all the way to iteration eight with Geis, and, you know, we've seen drawings of it and things. And I wanted to comment and agree with Mr. DiMarco that the people that have come to these meetings, I made it to three of the four, and they were very good questions and a lot of concern. There's a lot of people who love this city. Brooklyn is home to them, and they want to protect their home, and that's a perfectly legitimate thing for them to want to do. And I appreciated that when people disagreed, in general, it was done pretty professionally. There were a few that I thought got pretty out of hand, and it was not appropriate behavior. But in general, people asked very good questions, and I really appreciate them coming. Excuse me. What I've always said is that people need to do their research and make up their own mind. Don't listen to other sources, don't listen to rumors. Read the ordinance and vote based on the ordinance. The tricky thing, though, and it kind of got revealed tonight, we had a special meeting before the council meeting where we invited the developer and our economic development director to come in and please give us an update on what the feasibility study was and what the progress has been to date on this, because as council, we really have not had a formal presentation. There was hesitation initially, because we were told that Geis, the developer, wasn't ready to present. And fortunately, Councilwoman Pucci spearheaded it, and Mr. DiMarco and I strongly supported and signed the notice to call that special meeting, so that we said, "Hey, if Geis is ready or not, at least share with us as far as you are, because we need to know as a council, and people need to hear where you are before we have this very important vote that, again, could significantly change the future and the face of Brooklyn." One of the things that did come up in this meeting tonight is that, again, there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of what the proposal actually contains. I had asked a specific question about the development that would be at the top of the hill here at Memorial Park. What used to be the ball field on the upper park is now going to be development, and I said, "Well, what kind of development is that going to be?" And the answer was, "Well, it could be anywhere from a single-story cluster home to a four-story rowhouse apartment." Well, that's pretty dramatic in terms of the difference in terms of what kind of housing. Now, the tricky thing is, in this kind of development, as I've read more and studied more, there is a lot of uncertainty. They don't know. The developer rep that spoke said they like to keep a lot of flexibility, because as they develop something like this over time, it depends on what people are buying, you know, are we going to get office people in here? Are we going to get apartment people? Are we going to get people that want to have homes, et cetera? So they try to keep it very flexible so that they can have the economics work out as they go. The problem with that is it's a tremendous amount of uncertainty in terms of what the future of Brooklyn's going to look like. I would obviously love to have more office buildings, because that's where we get the higher payroll taxes, which is really going to help fund Brooklyn for the future. But there's no certainty that that's what's going to happen. And as Mr. Udris commented at one of the open meetings that were held, it basically comes down to trust. The voters have to trust the administration that what is going to be proposed is going to be the best thing for the city of Brooklyn and is going to be, you know, a positive growth for the city of Brooklyn. And I can see, based on a lot of the comments that came from these meetings, that in many cases, there isn't trust. That trust is just not there. And I don't know if it's a general national overtone in the country about not trusting politicians, or if it's specific to some of the past behavior. There has clearly been a lot of duplicity, in my mind, connected with this project, and I'm very concerned. I will say that as long as I'm on council, I love this city, and I live right across from Memorial Park, and I will defend to the nth degree, not completely obliterate in Memorial Park. I want it to stay. This kingdom is not a replacement for Memorial Park. And again, I live in Brooklyn, this is my hometown, I'm living in the house my dad built. I want to make sure this community stays nice, so I will pledge to the voters that I will do my best. But I am but one vote on this council, and there's no guarantee that next year or the year after or whatever, that I will still be on council. So there is uncertainty there as well. Anyway, long story short, try to read, try to understand as much as you can, and then just vote with your gut and your heart in terms of what you believe is best for Brooklyn. Last comment on that, I am not going to tell anybody how to vote. I've said this time and time again. My job is to help interpret it for you, help to get the facts out to you, and then you make up your mind. I'm not going to tell you how to vote. And the last other thing I just wanted to put a little plug in for is this weekend at the rec center, they're having the ice shows. The ice skating people that go through classes and things are having a show Friday night and Saturday night, and it's beautiful. They do a very nice job with the ice skating. So if you're not doing anything Friday night or Saturday night, it would be a fun thing to come up to and watch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musco. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I have a report from the Brooklyn Community Improvement Corporation, and I am secretary of that entity, and I did this evening sign our annual report that we submit to the auditor. There is no change from last year's report, that we have land with an assessed value of $440,000, and this is the CIC property over on Teedham Road that is near the Plain Dealer property. So thank you, Mr. Udris.
Teedham and also the two boroughs.
Oh, that's right. Thank you very much. I would like to thank the residents who came out this evening, and also to all the meetings related to the PUD. Ms. Musco already mentioned how these meetings this evening came to be, and I felt it was very important, because we had told the residents that we would do our best to update them prior to the election, and even though the feasibility study is not quite finished, and I do want to make sure everyone understands that the developer does still have more time, because they did have six months to get this project completed. I felt it was important that we kept our word to the residents and updated them as to where we are up to this point. And I'd like to thank Mr. Udris, Mr. Jimenez, and Mr. Stazinski for their part this evening. I know when I called Mr. Udris on, I think it was Monday, you know, they had to pull this together quickly, and I understand that residents still have some frustration that we don't have all the answers. Once the feasibility study is complete, we will have a lot more of the answers. However, we're not going to know exactly what's going to be there and what isn't. Basically, what it's going to give us is, is it feasible? And, you know, what are our next steps moving forward? I understand that this is a controversial issue for the community because of the involvement in Memorial Park, and I've said this before, that people in Brooklyn value our green space. And I share that value. I also have mentioned before that I was on the Parks Redevelopment Committee, and, you know, I'm skeptical how this is going to work, but there's really no set plan. It is a conceptual drawing, just a concept right now. I've already stated that I do support issue three, which adds the chapter to our zoning code to allow for the possibility of mixed-use development. And I felt that this was an important step that could aid us in attracting the type of jobs we need to replace some of the lost revenue at American Greetings. That being said, flipping back to the city center project, we don't know if it's feasible yet, but what we do know is that if the PUD passes, that gives the city much more authority and control over any planned unit development in the city than we currently have. As far as like if we have a property owner who it's zoned correctly, they own it or control it, and they adhere to the building codes, we can't do anything about it. And we've actually seen a lot of that development in Brooklyn. You know, Ridge Park Square is an example of that. There was a lot of positive anticipation in the community about the first phase, because for anyone who lived here way back when, there weren't a lot of shopping opportunities. I know most residents were really excited mostly about the movie theater. The city fought Phase Two and Three. Basically, we lost in court, and we were told by the judge, you know, other than the ingress egress concessions that we were able to get, these people own this property, leave them alone, you know, as long as they adhere to the building code. So for me, that was one plus, that we would have so much more authority and control, and we actually get to have a say in what it's going to look like, what the design is going to look like, how much open space are we going to have. So I share Ms. Musco's concerns about the density, and I think we just all have to keep in mind that it's a concept, that it doesn't mean there's going to be 100, what was it, 105 row houses? There could be a combination of things. We just don't know right now. And I know that for some residents, that's frustrating, but just so we're clear, we're voting on adding a chapter to the zoning code that would at least allow it in the I too think it's important for residents to get the facts and make up your own mind. It is important, though, that, you know, if there's some question you have, contact one of us, contact Mr. Udris. I know he's been answering questions from residents on a regular basis. I think our law director has assisted in some of this also. So please just get the facts. There's nobody up here who's going to lie to you. You know, I've been very open and honest with people, and I've run into a lot of residents who do have an opposing view. So the last thing I'd like to say is, I think it's very important, as residents of our community, that we have respect for those who have an opposing view. We're not all going to think the same thing. You know, at the end of the day, everyone has to make up their own mind. I'd also like to put in a plug to please ask you to consider supporting the school permanent improvement renewal and additional half a mil. This levy was initially passed back in the 1970s. They have not had an increase. This is the only levy our schools have that go for permanent improvements, which means it's capital items that have a long-term value. This cannot go for operating expenses, it cannot go for salaries. I did attend several meetings relating to this, and the schools do have a plan on how these funds are going to be used, both in the short term and the long term. So if anyone has any questions about this or concerns, please contact a school board member or the superintendent. I know that they're more than happy to answer anyone's questions. I personally am supporting this, and I think it is important for our community. Ms. Kelly had some, a couple of questions about the TIF. I think just to offer clarification, that right now, first of all, if it's feasible, which is a big if, because it's municipally owned land, there's no taxes being paid whatsoever. So if it gets leased to a developer, the value of the land now, as it is vacant, that automatically would produce tax revenue for the schools and other entities, like the library, the metro parks, Port Authority, county. So that automatically would result in an increase for the schools. The payments in lieu of taxes, let's say they're 20 years, let's say they're 30 years, that's money that the city's not getting now anyway, the schools aren't getting, nobody's getting. So those payments are made to pay for the public infrastructure improvements, and then once that drops off, all the taxing authorities then would collect the full value. So I hope that helps clarify. And I understand that the feasibility study's not done, there's nothing we can do about One quick thing, and I believe the mayor's going to address this, Mr. Tansky's question about the I-71 issue. I think that when we explored that last year and we did not get the funding, or Big Creek Connects did not get the funding for the study, this is something that's like 30, 40 years out. So while I supported that, and I hope that we can continue to explore it and find other sources of funding to do the study, that is not going to help us in the short term, because that is an extremely long-term project. And plug for the ice show, I've been to many of these over the years. I am planning on attending Saturday night. These students and young people do a fabulous job, so 7 o'clock at the rec center Friday evening and Saturday evening, they do a great job. And I'll reserve my comments regarding legislation when they're on the floor for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pucci. Mr. Bloom was not able to read this this evening because of the agenda did not specify that he could, but since we didn't have a regular meeting, I told him I would read it for him. So this is from Mr. Bloom. The other issue I want to encourage all citizens to support is issue eight, the permanent improvement levy for the schools. I have said in the past that our children and our schools are the most important asset in our city, and we need to provide our children with a safe environment and a facility that meets their needs. This issue is important because our school is in the need of a major maintenance, of major maintenance and improvements. I'm talking about the high school and not our new middle and elementary school. The high school has a major problem with the roofs leaking past the point of normal maintenance. The flashing is rusting and needs to be replaced. The flat roofs leak, and the water damage leads to internal structural deterioration. The school has an estimate of over $1 million to replace all the roofs in the high school, and certain areas need immediate attention. Our lighting is old and inefficient. It is estimated that replacing the present fluorescent lighting and updating the heating and ventilation controls could save $50,000 per year in energy costs. Our technology is behind today's standards, and we need to upgrade it to offer our students new opportunities and tools to learn. Our high school building is old, and just like our homes, when they get old, they need maintenance and repairs. For example, we still have some of the original stage and stage curtains and rigging when Elvis Presley performed here many years ago, and these are used extensively by our drama and music departments. Issue eight is for the renewal of the one mil permanent improvement levy that has been in existence since the 70s, and for an additional one-half mil. This one-half mil addition will only add $17.50 per year. Compare that to an average smartphone bill with Verizon or other carrier of $550 that most have. Note that permanent improvement monies cannot be used for administrative or teacher salaries. By law, they can only be used for improvements, maintenance, technology, and items that have a life of five years or more. Our children and our schools are most important Brooklyn assets. Let's support our children and our schools. I urge everyone to support issue three, the planned unit development rezoning for our city, and issue eight, the permanent improvement levy for our children and school. These issues were a win-win for our city, schools, and most importantly, our children. You're welcome. I mentioned at our last council meeting that there's been a lot of discussion, and unfortunately, a lot of false information that may have been coupled with that with dishonest and misleading statements regarding issue three. Up to that point, most of it was confined to social media. Now sadly, that dishonesty has taken printed form and is being distributed to residents around the city. Most of the information on this letter is misleading at best and categorically false at worst. I'm not going to spend the time by going through each bullet point. If you wish to speak me on this issue, please do. A full copy of the actual PUD ordinance, as already mentioned, is available on the city's website and on the Facebook page. However, there's an outright falsity on this piece of literature that I must address since it pertains to me as a council person. One of the bullet points on the literature says, and I quote, "Every single council member has publicly stated that this zoning ordinance, PUD, had only three works of study in, was rushed, not analyzed nor vetted properly before being approved." That is completely false. I have never said, nor do I think, that this ordinance was not analyzed nor vetted properly. In fact, we analyzed this ordinance in several different public council meetings, and have had numerous discussions regarding this ordinance. I have previously corrected- I have previously corrected the individual behind this paper regarding other false statements that have been made via social media. I did so in a lengthy face-to-face meeting and was assured by this individual it would not happen again. Unfortunately, it has. As I mentioned at that same meeting, I have no problem, and I've said it publicly, with someone being against the PUD issue, and I have no problem with them campaigning against that issue. That freedom is one of the things that makes this nation great. However, I do have a major problem with being lied about as an individual, and have even a bigger problem when that lie is being spread around our city. This type of behavior has no place in any part of society, much less in conversation as serious as this. I am asking that these flyers be destroyed, corrected, to reflect accurate information, then redistributed if so desired. Those that continue to pass with information, whether they know it or not, are being dishonest with that literature. If you wish to campaign against the issue, I encourage that. If you wish to vote against it, that is your right as a voter. However, I am simply asking that we just are honest. Now, I'd like to take a few minutes and once again, just talk to you as my fellow residents. I've had the privilege of serving as your councilman and as the council president, but I would like to speak as a concerned citizen regarding the actual Issue Three. It is important to understand that a vote for Issue Three is a zoning issue. It is not a vote for any particular project, city center, or otherwise. The PUD simply allows the city to use vastly underutilized property to attract new businesses, new residents, et cetera. The PUD and the City Center project are separate items. The guy studied the feasibility of the potential City Center project is set to be completed shortly. They are contracted to have it finished up the first day of June. At this point, it will be presented to council for a full review. We received review this evening, as has been mentioned several times by council members. This study will, this project, City Center project, will change. This is just a feasibility study. It is important to understand the difference. The confusion comes into play when people start mixing the two together. Without the PUD, something like the City Center project cannot happen. However, even if the PUD is passed, it is no guarantee of a City Center project. This is simply a feasibility study for a City Center project. The PUD simply allows that study to continue, then be played out if it is feasible. You don't build a house or buy a piece of property for a building a house without studying the land, the surroundings, and the feasibility of that project. The same is true here, only in a much larger and way more restrictive scale. Much information out there makes it seem that if you vote for the PUD, that somehow you support the City Center project. While I do understand this to a point, that type of thinking, again, is eating the horse before the cart. I fully support the PUD, the Issue Three ordinance, but I am not necessarily in favor of the City Center project. They are separate. I am 100% open to the idea of our City Center project, but what that entails is yet to be seen, as has been mentioned by previous council members. Without the PUD, nothing can even be considered to be built for mixed-use on this property or any other property in Brooklyn. This greatly restricts Brooklyn's growth. The zoning of portions of our city is antiquated and needs to be changed. This PUD allows for that change. The PUD is over 10 pages of detailed cans and can-nots for any future project. It sets the parameters for what a mixed-use developer can and cannot do. There are numerous checks and balances set up inside the PUD. I have weighed the pros and cons of this legislation. I've studied the issue in detail. As a resident, here's how it boiled down for me. Number one, we have a $1.5 million shortfall this year. We'll have a shortfall next year and the year after as well, without significant changes. Number two, we have a top employer leaving our city unless they can obtain Class A office space in Brooklyn. It's been mentioned that they're holding us hostage. They're not holding us hostage. They came to us, they want to stay in our city, but they do not have the office space in order to do that right now. This office space cannot be built without this zoning change, this PUD, which is why the ordinance was placed in front of council in the manner that it was. This top employer needs to find new space or will be forced to leave Brooklyn. Arguments have been made on the extent of that timeline, their potential departure. However, one thing is for sure, if they do not find this type of office space, they will leave. This has been discussed at length. Beyond that, number three, we have aged buildings. Our police station in particular, it must be replaced or updated. We have large amounts of underutilized land that could bring additional revenue a number of ways. The PUD allows for development not just on the city-owned property here, but also on privately-owned property as well, such as the American Greetings property. Without going into detail, the PUD allows for a project, they can offer different types of financing, we heard some of that tonight in the previous meeting, to potentially pay for some of the infrastructure improvements. So based upon these factors, I've made my decision. Is anything guaranteed? Of course not. Mr. Tomusco just mentioned it a second ago. Of course, there's nothing that's guaranteed. But we need to do something in order to improve our city. This PUD allows for the flexibility to do that. In my opinion, the potential return greatly outweighs the risk. I choose to move to this city, I chose to raise my family here, I choose to be employed here, I chose to run for city council because I wanted to make a positive difference. While there are no guarantees, the potential moving Brooklyn forward, recouping some of the lost revenue with the potential future projects, keeping a top-three employer and attracting new residents is enough of a reason for me to vote for Issue Three. In regards to some other comments that were made, there was a comment made about a letter or about an email that was sent out, and I will read the email. It was not sent to the individual that sent that, but I will be happy to read exactly what I said. This was sent out on February 1st, 2017. It says this, "Council administration, congratulations. Congratulations on being a part of an exciting new chapter in Brooklyn. With the passage of Ordinance 2017-1 and 2017-9, Brooklyn has taken a big step in moving our city forward. The debate has been thoughtful, thorough, and at times contentious, but in the end, the ordinances were passed with a unified voice and zero dissenting votes. Now the voters of our great city get to weigh in on the future of their town. Four council meetings in eight days definitely puts a strain on personal schedules and families, but everyone's willingness to see this PUD come to fruition was necessary and is greatly appreciated. Thank you again for all your hard work and your dedication to our great town. Sincerely, Ron Van Kirk, Council President." In regards to the other comments that were made, Mrs. Pucci already addressed those amply from Mrs. Kelly about the TIF and about the impact study. Again, once the feasibility study is done and we have a developer, at that time, then is that's when the impact study will have to be done. But again, you can't really do an impact study until you have something that can be affected by that impact, so that makes sense. And I will read over your other questions. You had a lot of them very thought out, and I will answer them to the best of my ability and in a future email to you. In regards to Ordinance 2017-29, this amends Rule 14, the Rules of Council, Order of Business, codified pursuant to Section 12122 of the Codified Ordances. This rule change would add prayer to council's agenda for the start of each council meeting. When I emailed each council member with this idea, I received some very positive and wonderful feedback. Ms. Tomusco recommended that we invite one member of the clergy from Brooklyn's fine churches per council meeting to open up our meetings in prayer. I think that is a tremendous idea, and if this passes, that's how we should intend to start. After that, on a rotating basis, council members who wish to participate may invite the person of their choice to open our meetings in prayer. Once this rule is passed, council meetings will begin with prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Brooklyn is in large part a community of faith. Asking for God's blessing and wisdom on our meeting is both appropriate and necessary. Council members are certainly not required to participate, but I do thank my fellow council members for their support. I believe that's all I have for this evening. With that, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much tonight. Kevin, I do want to address your issue. Big Creek Connects, as Mrs. Pucci said, is the person who spearheaded the I-71 corridor study, partnered with the City of Cleveland, the City of Brooklyn, as well as Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. They went to Noaka about two and a half years ago, asking for funding to move to the next phase of the study, to see if what could be actually realized. As she said, it's an extended period of time, I think it was about 15 years, that it would actually take, once the study was completed, which the study in itself would take a few years to happen. They have introduced this concept again. They have reached out to the City of Brooklyn, the City of Cleveland, and are trying to go back to Noaka for this study money again. So we have said yes. This is something we'd like to contemplate looking at in the future. I hope that answers your question. On Tuesday, I was able to go down to Columbus with the Mayor's and Managers Association. Some good news that we were able to hear is that the House passed the version of the Governor Kestes' budget, and they took out some things that were vital to our community, including the centralized collection aspect. So I'm glad to hear that the House took that part out, as far as, as well as the throwback tax. This would have been detrimental to our city if this would have contained, if this would have stayed in the budget. I'm glad to see that the House has already taken it out. It now moves to the Senate, some things may change, but this is a good sign for all communities in our area. Mrs. Kelly, I hope that Mr. Udris will be able to answer all of your questions in a timely manner. You had a lot of them, and so I'll link you to that by email. One of the things that you've mentioned that has been brought up before is the tax exemption for St. Elias. When you're an entity that's tax exempt, like this city, for our land, and you turn yourself into a revenue-generating source, you're now taxable. And a perfect example is if today were to go with this franchise agreement and we would move forward with these solar panels, that our land would now be taxable, because we are producing a revenue from that. And, you know, we worked that out with our deal, but that land was taxed at, but now it would, we're producing a revenue, so no, there's going to have to be a property tax on that. One thing, and Mr. Van Kirk mentioned this, you know, this tenant that we've talked about, you know, one of the prime reasons why this process for the PUD had been expedited, you know, was this talk with this tenant in the City of Brooklyn right now, one of our corporate citizens. And what I don't want to do is demonize this corporation. This is a great corporation in the City of Brooklyn. I hope they are here for years. And what I don't want to do is take all of this anger from the people in opposition and the people in support and put it on the blame of this company, because it's not that. They didn't make the decision to push this Issue Three forward in this PUD. That was the choice of the administration. There are great corporate citizens that are trying to work with us. I commend them for meeting with us as much time as they do, as trying to work out a plan to stay here in Brooklyn. And so what I don't want to do is put any blame on one of our corporate citizens that is looking to stay here. So I just want to make that clear. If you want to fault anybody for the timeline, fault me, fault the administration, that's fine, but this corporate citizen didn't do this. They're not holding us over captive for anything. They're trying to work with us, and I am so glad that they are, because we cannot afford another huge loss in this community. As far as public meetings and these comments about employees and threatening, you know, these videos are taped. I urge you to go watch, I urge you to watch the meetings. I'm not going to sit here and, you know, go back and forth with anybody. It's pointless. Watch the meetings for yourself, determine what was said, and that's all I ask. And thank you. Are you going to? Okay. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on with director's reports. We have just one this evening, and that is our Economic Development Director, Mr. Udris.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I am directing your attention to the ordinance regarding the Water Resources and the Delineation Proposal with Davi Resource Group. I am requesting that City Council consider this under emergency rules. The reason for the purpose of this is that in the contract, we were wanting them to do, we want to start from the very beginning and look at what is the proper reuse of the property that we have on Tiedemann Road and the 15 acres that are around it. Obviously, this was where the former IKEA location was. To start that process over and look at what can be developed there, we need to do our own delineation study, and one of the key items is also to do a topographic study. We are asking, the contract amount is for $34,000, excuse me, 34... Yes, 37. The additional $4,000 or $3,960 is due to the changing weather conditions right now and the foliage, that if we can pass this under emergency rules this evening, we could possibly save $3,960 on this contract. And I felt it was important enough for council to be aware of that fact. The reason is, the longer it takes and if the leaves get larger, it's much harder for them to do the studies. They need to have a line of sight where they do, where they determine how high everything is. And unfortunately, we weren't aware of this when we were discussing this earlier in year in the wintertime. So I bring your attention to this now. If council does not pass it on emergency, that's fine. We simply would, if they approve the ordinance, would have to pay the extra $3,960. So I felt you needed to be aware of that factor. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Udris. We'll now move on with the agenda for the scene of legislation. First up is Resolution 2017-6 is up for third reading and adoption this evening. A resolution in support of the City of Brooklyn Plan Unit Development District overlay zoning measure Issue Three on the May 2nd, 2017 ballot.
Excuse me, we have...
Oh, I forgot, I forgot. I apologize. I forgot the request. Sorry, I got so many papers up here. All right, we do have three, two requests this evening and a bid approval. The first one, I have a letter here that says, "To Mayor Catherine Gallagher, members of Brooklyn City Council from Chief Zemick, request for permission to accept the donation. I am respectfully requesting that the mayor and council allow me to accept a donation of $1,000 worth of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors from Walmart to hand out to our needy residents." Thank you, Chief Zemick.
Move to authorize accepting the grant from Walmart.
Second.
To approve the acceptance, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Next is request for authorization to continue with our salt consortium. I have a letter here from our service director, dated April 19, 2017. Dear Mayor, members of council, I hereby request authorization to enter into an agreement with Cargill Incorporated Salt Division in cooperation with the Brexville Purchasing Consortium. Cargill Incorporated Deicing Technology has agreed to extend the sodium chloride contract from November 1st, 2017 through October 31st, 2018, under the following terms. Price for the 2017-18 season, $52.29 per ton untreated. Last year, it was $53.29 per ton. Revision of our estimated quantity from 3,200 tons to 2,800 tons. There will be no charge of storage of contractual balances on current contract from November 1st to December 31st, 2017. Same terms of 80% minimum commitment, no maximum, and the same 24 to 72 hours delivery guarantee is outlined in 2015 bid specifications. With the mild winter, we will need to purchase 1,790.3 tons to meet our minimum commitment for 2017. At this time, it is estimated that we have room for 1,000 tons. Depending on the snowfall, excuse me, in November, December this year, it is going to be very close for us to meet our requirement for the 2017 contract. It will definitely help that Cargill will not charge us for the storage of our remaining balance. Because the salt berm is more than half full, the remaining balance will have to be blown, and which will amount to $101,655.80 for the 2017 contract.
May I just ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Verba, first of all, thank you for being here this evening. What is the difference if it wasn't blown in? And I understand why it has to be blown in, but...
$3 a ton, like $3.50 a ton.
Okay, for the 1790 that we have to purchase from 17 and...
Yeah, we had it all blown in. We did build it in some trucked in, some blown.
Okay, thank you. Move to authorize the agreement with Cargill?
Second.
To authorize the agreement, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Next up is a bid approval for the road-on-road improvements. I have a letter from CW Courtney Company, our engineer, dated April 19, 2017, regarding the road-on-road improvements. Dear Mayor and council, at 12:00 local time on Tuesday, April 18, 2017, five bids were received and opened for the above-referenced project. The engineer's construction cost estimate for the project is $2,138,355. Submitted bids for all sections of the work range from 4.5% to 15.5% above the estimate. A summary of the bids is provided below, and full tabulation of the bids is attached for your review. There were five contractors that bitted on this. Three of them bitted all sections, two of them bitted just for the pavement sections. Katz Construction Incorporated was an all-section bid, total bid amount $2,234,541.75. This is an increase over the estimate of 4.5%. The days to start would be 10, completion of 150. Next is for Breezy Trucking and Paving Incorporated. This was also an all-section bid for $2,283,723.38. This is a 6.8% over the estimate. They had days to start would be 30 to completion 200. Next is Trimore Corporation, all-section bid, $2,470,59.50. That's an increase of 15.5% over the estimate. That is for a 10-day start, 180-day completion. Per construction and CA Agresta Construction were only for the pavement section, so were not considered for the all-section bid. After reviewing the bids, we find that all submitted are in order, are responsive to the bid requirements, and the lowest investment was submitted by Katz Construction Incorporated. The experience, record, and history submitted by Katz with their bid demonstrates their ability to complete projects of comparable scope and magnitude. Additionally, Katz has successfully completed projects in the city of Brooklyn in previous years. Assuming a June 1, 2017 notice to proceed for the construction, Katz' schedule of 10 days to start, 150 days to complete, would have the project completed by early November 2017. Based upon a review of the bids submitted, we are recommending award of this contract to Katz Construction the amount of $2,234,541.75. This amount as indicated above represents the total amount bid for all sections of the work in this project. If you're ready to contact me with any questions regarding this matter, very truly you are C. Douglas Courtney, City Engineer.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just, Mr. Verba, we did not get the full tabulation of the bids that was supposed to be attached, so if you could have that sent out or from Mr. Courtney, I'd appreciate that. And if no one else has anything, I'll make a motion that we award the bid to Katz Construction for all sections for $2,234,541.75.
Second.
To accept the bid of Katz Construction, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Okay, next up is Resolution 2017-6. A resolution in support of the City of Brooklyn Plan Unit Development PUD District Overlay Zoning Measure Issue Three on the May 2, 2017 ballot. Make a motion to support?
Second.
Make the motion to adopt?
Adopt.
Sorry about that.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
I kind of already stated this before, but I'm going to be abstaining. I said I do support the pod, but I encourage residents to get the facts that they're interested in and make up their own minds. Thank you.
If I could to be recognized, sir?
Yes.
I had said this prior as well. I'm not going to be voting for this because I don't think it's a necessary or appropriate ordinance. We voted to put it on the ballot, and now it's up to the voters to decide. So I don't really want to be telling the voters how to vote. Thank you.
To adopt, Mary Bill Beer?
No.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
No.
Debbie Tomusco?
No.
Kathy Pucci?
Abstain.
Okay, next up is Ordinance 2017-29. Amending Rule 14 of the Rules of Council Order of Business, codified pursuant to Section 121.22 of the codified ordinances of the city of Brooklyn. I made the motion to adopt?
Second.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Thank you. Just for point of information, when Mr. Van Kirk first emailed us, I stated that my opinion was the proper venue to discuss this was at the continuation of our organizational meeting, which has yet to be done. We never discussed the rules of council. It's been our custom to discuss the rules of council. We all have inputs into possible changes. We had some unresolved issues that have since been resolved relating to other matters from the organizational meeting, but we still need to continue the discussion on our rules of council. Our custom is, once we've had that discussion and we've had a vote on different changes, we have one ordinance that incorporates all the changes to our rules of council that there's been a consensus that we're going to move forward on. Just adopting this is just taking one person's idea for one very small section from the rules without regard to the ideas that other people have. So I am going to abstain on this, and hopefully soon we'll get a continuation of the organizational so that we will be able to have a proper discussion of everyone's ideas for revising rules of council this year. Thank you.
Just a couple of points of clarification. I did reach out to council after our previous meeting and tried to set up something to meet. It did not work, so we were not able to do that. Beyond this, council is, council is able at any time to present an ordinance to change the rules. So although this ordinance does, if it passes, would take effect. If we want to change other rules, you're certainly able to do that. On top of that, we have had two organizational meetings. Both of those meetings were adjourned prior to me being able to complete the agenda, and on that agenda was for discussion of rules of council. So just want to put that out there, that was on my agenda. However, the meeting was voted to be adjourned before I was able to do that. There's been a motion and a second.
Excuse me, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Please. I just wanted to comment. This is about opening the council meeting with prayer. And when Ron first suggested this and sent an email out, I, struck me as a great idea because I think the more we keep taking prayer, I mean, we took prayer out of the school, and look at how well that's working out. I think we need God's help and as many things as we can possibly get it in. And I think prayer is a wonderful thing for people to do. Since then, however, and that's what I suggested around, maybe we could even get the different leaders of the various churches and places of worship in Brooklyn to come and open a meeting. Well, since then, I've spoken to residents, I've spoken to a couple fellow council people. I've even spoken to Father Bill, who's the pastor at my parish that I attend, St. Thomas More. And I've had some other ideas given to me. So I think what I'd like to do is hold off and have more opportunity to discuss this and some of the ideas that were presented to me. And then I did speak with Councilwoman Pucci, and I do appreciate the idea. There are other issues that we have about councils, the way we conduct council meetings, the order in which we take things on, et cetera. So I do concur with her that I think I would prefer to have this wait. But again, I support the idea of prayer, God knows. But I'd rather have this wait and then just do one general ordinance because we do still have a couple of... And the reason the meeting got adjourned early, the only thing we got as far as was council president in those organizational meetings, and they ran late and long and contentious. So we finally, just I think out of exhaustion, voted to adjourn. But there are other issues that other council people have in terms of the order and what happens at a council meeting. So I just wanted to make that statement.
And for just one more point of clarification, in those meetings, we also elected the council members to the committees, commissions, and wards in those council meetings. Then the meeting was voted to be adjourned.
You appointed them, did you not?
We voted on the ones that had to be voted on.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Regarding the rules of council, so, you know, as the leader of council, I mean, if the council members aren't available whenever the data is that you suggested, I mean, you suggest alternate dates till you have the meeting. I've been on council for eight years now. I've never gone into May where we still have not completed organizational meeting and had a discussion on changing rules. I mean, this is ridiculous.
And I will reiterate that the previous two meetings were voted by council members to adjourn.
I heard, I did hear what you said. I'm saying that you've asked, you gave us a date that you wanted to have an organizational meeting, I don't know when you sent it out, March or April. For whatever reason, we couldn't get council together to do it. We've had no other invitation since to have this meeting, to complete what we're required to do. And I just, I mean, I find it unacceptable.
That's fine. If any other council members has any ideas for change in rules of council, please by all means send it to me, and we will meet. Up to this point, I have heard nothing from any council members as far as what they want to change. If you want to present a meeting, I'd be happy to do that. I did try after the previous meeting and was unable to do that. So that's where I'm speaking from, from the previous meeting.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just two quick points. The first is, the reason those meetings were adjourned was because we needed more information from our law director on an issue that was facing us. The law director went through a process where he consulted the Ohio Ethics Commission on something. We got a ruling, so that's why it was adjourned, because we needed further guidance and expertise of our law director. Secondly, I do not believe it's in council's best interest to piecemeal, send things, well, I want this idea, I want that idea. Since rules have been established, we follow the same procedure. We sit down at the organizational meeting, discuss the rules of council, reach a consensus on what are we going to change, what are we not going to change. So my suggestion would be that, Mary Jo, if you could send an email out and just poll some people when they would be available in the next few weeks to reschedule, or I shouldn't say reschedule, to schedule the resumption of our organizational meeting. Thank you very much.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
As long as we're talking about Mary Jo emailing out council members to try to organize meetings, she tried to do that after this Monday meeting was canceled, and she only received one response. You know, I, I accept that council can organize a meeting amongst themselves, which has done tonight, but you guys do have your clerk of council that does do this actively, constantly, and not one person responded to her, and then we get a notice that three people want to organize a meeting. Great. She was trying to do that. She needs people to respond. And frequently, over the last two years, she's had more and more trouble with council people responding to the emails to set these up. I fully understand, believe me, knowing from the seat you're sitting in, you have full-time jobs, you're busy, you have to get to these emails, but, I mean, this has to be a group effort here.
Okay, we have a motion and a second?
Second. Okay. To adopt, Mary Bill Beer?
No.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
No.
Debbie Tomusco?
Abstain.
Kathy Pucci?
Abstain.
Next is Ordinance 2017-32. Amending, or excuse me, 2017-30. Authorizing a contract modification, change orders seven and eight with Eclipse Company LLC, the Tiedemann Road Project PID 95548, in the amount of $32,147.8.
Introduce, this is the one for emergency?
No, this is up for third reading.
Okay. I'm sorry, I apologize. May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just one quick question for Mr. Verba, and I know that we had this big confusion where we weren't at first able to have the finance committee meeting. The further work that was, I think we got an email or something, is that going to result in this going higher, or this is included under the scope of what we're already agreeing to pay?
We are still trying to, there's going to be one more change order. It's going to be estimated probably another $20,000 possibly. And these are all things that were design problems that they encountered, so...
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. I'll make the motion to adopt. We really don't have a choice. I mean, we don't like that we have to pay this extra money. This is for the widening of Tiedemann Road in front of the Plain Dealer with the continuous right-hand turn lane, but I don't see that we have a choice.
I'll second.
To adopt, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
No.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-32. Amending Section 2 of Ordinance 2006-53 entitled Establishing a City Ice Time and Admission Rates for the Persons Using City Ice for Figure Skating Purposes Only.
May I be adopted?
Second.
To adopt, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-33. Amending Section 1 of Ordinance 2006-19 entitled Providing for Fees for a Summer Figure Skating Program at the Recreation Center.
May I be adopted?
Second.
To adopt, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-35. Expressing consent of the City of Brooklyn pursuant to Section 4933.16 of the Ohio Revised Code for Cleveland Public Power to construct distribution facilities within the city of Brooklyn and granting a non-exclusive franchise to CPP or Cleveland Public Power to provide electricity services to customers in Brooklyn, provided that the requirements of all applicable code and any related agreements are met.
May I be adopted?
Second.
To adopt, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-36 and 2017-38 are on second reading and have already been read into the record. Ordinance 2017-40, we're hoping to pass by emergency this evening. Amending certain sections of Ordinance 2004-45, establishing fees for the admission and use of facilities at the City of Brooklyn Multipurpose Indoor Recreation Center. And because we are hoping to pass this by emergency, I read this in the record last time, but let me read what the changes would be. The ordinance shall be amended as follows. Section 2, the fees for admission, to and use of facilities shall be as follows. A general admission for ice skating with resident ID card, 18 and over is $2 to $5. 17 and under is $1 to $4. 60 and over is gratis, age 5 and under is gratis. Without a resident ID card, 18 and over is $4 to $7. 17 and under is $3 to $6. 60 and over is $3 to $6, age 5 and under is gratis. For skate rental with resident ID card is $2 to $5. Without resident ID card is $3 to $6. For skate sharpening is $4 to $8. And I will introduce by all suspend the rules.
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DiMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Ordinance 2017-41, we also hope to pass by emergency this evening. Amending Section 1B of Ordinance 2011-15, establishing Parma Heights Community Partner Rates at the John M. Cohen Recreation Center and Naterium. And once again, because we are passing this by emergency, let me read to the record the changes once again. Underneath Section 1, a general admission to the Naterium and outdoor swimming complex and ice rink shall be as follows. General ice rink admission rates for Parma Heights residents, 18 and over $3 to $6. 17 and under $2 to $5. 60 and over $2 to $5. Age 5 and under will be gratis. Introduce by all, suspend the rules.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
To adopt, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Next up is ordinance 2017-42. This is authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Davie Resource Group to provide services to the city of Brooklyn. And we do need to amend this this evening. And Mr. Udris, explain this a little bit, but since this, we're going to try to pass this by emergency this evening, could you go into a little bit more detail about exactly what they're going to be doing and the reason for it?
When the original study was done, it was undertaken by IKEA. And IKEA's delineation...
And this is for the property?
This is for the property that is on Tiedemann Road that is owned by the Community Improvement Corporation and a portion of the Plain Dealer property. The current area that was designated by the US Corps of Engineers is a wetland. To properly go back and look at how this property could be possibly redeveloped, we need to do our own delineation study. We consulted with our legal counsel, who is our environmental affairs person. He strongly urged us that we undertake these four activities to determine which agency we would properly work with, how this property would be used properly as a wetland or as a development site. But without this delineation study being done properly from the very beginning, we're basically redoing the tracks that should have been done before. And so therefore, that's why we're urging council to spend the money, because this property has a value of over $425,000 if we can actually put it to use, and it also could generate new income taxes for the city. So the amendment allows for the other clarification of other services, but also we're asking for emergency so that the study could get done now while the trees have not come out in full foliage.
Thank you, Ms. Udris.
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Since this property is owned by the CIC, I would just like to add, there's going to be four tasks that they do. They're going to do a complete document review, a detailed topography study, the water resource delineation, and then provide recommendations for potential future permitting action. So I believe it's wise to spend this money because, one way or another, we need to know if that area is, has the potential for future development. And I will make a motion to amend this. In Section 1, Line 2, after the word permitting, we're going to add in other services. So it will read, "To provide water resources delineation and permitting and other services for property located at Tiedemann and West Spit Off Roads, et cetera." And we need a second to that.
Second.
To amend, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk? Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes. Introduce by all suspend the rules as amended?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Tony DeMarco?
Yes.
Debbie Tomusco?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
To adopt, as amended, Mary Bill Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Barb Politzky?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.